Okay, welcome everybody. I'd like to call to order the May 4th meeting of the Northfield Township Board of Trustees. Special meeting at 7:00 PM. Invocation. Heavenly Father, we come to you this evening and ask that you guide us in discerning, making of decisions and guide us, Lord, so that we make decisions that are in the best interest of our community. In Jesus' name, amen. All right, if you can join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance. Next, roll call, please.
Um, Chick.
Dana Chick, present, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Otto.
Dana Otto, present, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Moko.
Nate Moko, present, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Nelson.
Joshua Nelson, um, present, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Zelenak.
Present, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Manley, present, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan. Dignan.
Present, beautiful Northfield Township, Michigan, Washtenaw County.
All right, I'll hear.
All right, you have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Just forward. Motion by Dignan, supported by Otto, any discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll?
Yep, Moko.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chick.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Next is a time on the agenda for petitions and communications, so citizen comments on any items that are on our agenda this evening. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If there's anyone from the public that would like to address the board about an agenda item, please raise your hand at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on. I don't have any comments or clarifications. Oh, hold on, we do have a member of the public. Can I go ahead? You have three minutes to address the board.
Yes, Adam Only, uh, what more like resident? Um, I would just ask that the invocation is not led with a particular religious, like, uh, ending it with Jesus' name, we pray, amen. Um, not everyone in this community is practicing the same religion or any religion at all. I understand that prayers are allowed, but when they name a particular God, it feels like it's really, uh, um, eliminating some from participating in the prayer. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Only. Okay. Seeing no other hands are raised, move on. I don't have any comments. Does anybody else have any comments or clarifications? Seeing none, uh, we'll go on to the first item under new business, which is approval of the ballot language for the public safety millage renewal. Mr. Wagner is present on the meeting. You do have the, uh, language was sent as a part of a supplement to the meeting. Mr. Wagner.
I, I don't really have anything to say about this. I mean, I, I've never really been involved in resolutions or millage language in the past, so it's always been done by supervisors and attorneys and clerks and such, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Fink.
Mr. Supervisor, uh, the treasurer pointed out that I may have missed the word increase. And I think it's the fourth whereas. Whereas the township board determines that it is in the best interest of its residents to request a renewal of this authorization, it should say renewal and increase of this authorization to match the rest of it. The heading should also say millage renewal and increase proposal to make it clear that this is both a renewal and a slight increase. And I apologize, but I'm grateful that the treasurer caught that.
Thank you, Ms. Eleanor.
Thank you, Mr. Fink.
With that, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 21640 with the said amendments to the fourth whereas paragraph where it will read, request a renewal and increase of this authorization. Is there support?
I'll support.
Supported by Chick. Any discussion on the resolution? Yes, Nate, Mr. Moko.
I just wanted to make it clear to anybody in the public, this is really just carrying on the millage that we voted yes on, I believe, four or five years ago. It's not, we're not increasing the taxes. It's a carry, basically a carryover, keeping the millage going. To put it in layman's terms.
Well, I think, yeah, I think it actually does. It is an increase. Uh, Mr. Wagner, uh, the, the increase was to bring us to more substantial full-time coverage, is that correct?
Yeah, we, we have no full-time coverage right now. I mean, we, we cover it with part-time personnel, which has become very unstable. Uh, we are, we probably have covered with people we shouldn't be covering with that haven't been trained all the way. Um, it's, it's just time. It's also, at the same time, that another millage that's a little more than what we're asking for is dropping off for the, uh, the building, uh, that was approved, so. Um, yes, it is an increase in this millage, but ultimately you should see a slight, slight decrease in, in the tax between the, the, uh, millage for this building and, uh, the fire, uh, village.
Okay, and I think that's what Mr. Moko was getting at, was that, and, and overall, your tax rates will, uh, go down slightly.
I do have a quick question, and maybe this is for Kathy. Kathy, will this make this for the August election then?
Yes, we have until the 11th to turn it in, so as soon as we get the correct, um, front page, I'll get it over to the county.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions in regards to this, uh, resolution? Seeing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Yep, um, Chick.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Nelson.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Moko.
Yes.
Seven zero.
Okay.
Thank, thank you very much, uh, and if you don't need me for the rest of the meeting, we have training going on in the back of the department, so if you don't think you have anything for me, I'm gonna drop off the meeting.
Yeah, I think we're all set, Mr. Wagner.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion that, uh, pursuant to MCL 15268H, uh, we will be going into a closed session to receive attorney-client privileged communication exempt from disclosure by state and federal statute. Is there support?
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Otto. Any discussion on the motion? Yes, Ms. Zelenak?
So I just want to, um, have our attorney tell us why we're going into closed session.
Certainly. Mr. Fink.
I have prepared a privileged communication to the board that I'm asking the board to discuss, under the Open Meetings Act, you are authorized to go into closed session to discuss matters that are exempt from disclosure under state or federal law, and a communication from your attorney is privileged and exempt from disclosure under the Michigan Freedom of Information Act, which makes it a legitimate reason to go into closed session for the, uh, pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, and the purpose of me asking you to do that is so that we can have a frank discussion about the memorandum and legal advice that I have given you in that memorandum.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fink. Are there any, any other discussion? Okay, prior to us taking a vote, I do want to let the public know that what we will do is, uh, after a vote, uh, to go into closed session, we will, uh, leave this meeting, although this meeting will remain open. Uh, we will go into a closed session, and then when we come out of closed session, we will return to this meeting. And, uh, any decisions that are made by the board are made in public, and they will be made in this meeting. So with that, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Moko.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Seven zero.
Okay. Thank you, folks. We will be back. Okay, let's wait for everybody to get back in here. Okay, welcome everybody back. Uh, next is, uh, possible action. I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, instruct staff and the clerk to, uh, notice and, uh, and schedule, uh, public hearing, uh, for the Chestnut Development sent to us by the, uh, Planning Commission in accordance with the Michigan Zoning and Enabling Act, uh, two, uh, 110 of 2016 in accordance with section 1253103. Um, and to notice it appropriately. Is there support?
I'll support.
Motion by Dignan, supported by Chick. Questions on the motion? Ms. Eleanor?
I'm muted.
Unmute, Eleanor.
I will not be voting in favor of this motion, because I think we should send the Chestnut Development back to the Planning Commission to get more understanding and feedback on their conditions that they sent to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Eleanor. Any other discussion on the motion? Ms. Manley?
Um, I'm saying that we should put this on the 25th meeting. Um, not the first, because it's after a holiday weekend, or move it to the first meeting in June.
Yes, the 25th.
Um, not really for the special meeting, so.
Yep. If it is on the 25th, we will clear the agenda and have only a, uh, matter of fact, I'd like to, um, withdraw my motion, uh, and state the same motion, but the, that be scheduled for the 25th, that the agenda be cleared of all items, uh, except for, uh, those required, and, uh, that we have just a public hearing, uh, possible action on the public hearing, and a second call to the public. But since we'll have a public hearing, we will not have a first call to the public. That is my motion. So, okay, still supported by Chick. Ms. Manley?
Jackie, is that okay with RFP? Just bump that out two weeks?
We will notify, uh, those that are, that would be selected, that it was bumped out.
Okay.
Notify all of them.
Okay, is that gonna be any kind of issue?
No.
Or, okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Otto. All right, seeing no other discussion, Ms. Manley, can you call the roll, please?
Um, Chick.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Zelenak.
No.
Moko.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Nelson.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
Six one.
Okay. Ms. Otto?
Yes.
Did you care to make?
You want me to make the next one? Okay. So I would like to make the motion to update the zoning ordinance to conclude the language uh, for public hearing by the township board for the PUD.
I'll support.
Right, and that's to, uh, amend our ordinances to be compliant with the Michigan Zoning and Enabling Act, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? And this is simply an instruction to the Planning Commission to undertake that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll, please?
Yep, Manley, yes. Otto.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Moko.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Dignan.
Yes.
And seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of continuing independent contractor services. I know that we've been working, uh, hard to get all of our staff that need to be staff, uh, made, uh, employees and, uh, the independent contractors that we do work with, making sure that, uh, and, and I believe that work has been undertaken by the Personnel Committee, if I'm not correct, uh, let me know, but, uh, and then getting independent contractor agreements signed with all of our staff. I just want to make sure that as we look at this and we look at the budget, that we get this stuff done prior to the end of the fiscal year. Uh, that's why I wanted to bring it up and put it on there. I didn't want to miss it. It was intended to be on a previous agenda, and I missed it. Um, that's really all. I just wanted to, to bring that up and, and look through it. Am I correct in that the Personnel Committee is, is undertaking that?
So the, uh, the Personnel Committee is finalizing the agreement for the, um, the stenographer. It is our understanding that the other, uh, independent, uh, agreement with, uh, the videographer, um, uh, was not, did not want to have a contract. So, uh, I know that when we met with, um, with our labor attorney in the past, uh, the recommendation was is that the stenographer is put as an independent contractor and the, uh, videographer would be put as an employee based on uh, the requirements of a independent contractor, but that never has happened.
Okay, I just hope we can get this cleaned up by the end of the fiscal year, so it doesn't carry over into next year, and, and we can do whatever we've got to do, so.
So the, uh, the bottom line has to do with, um, with the insurance for that, um, while, uh, Stacy was in an agreement of how we would proceed forward with the uh, insurance, we did, I did contact our insurance company, and the recommendation was that, um, there would be liability insurance that she should take at liability insurance.
Okay, well, and I know with technology changes and everything, I mean, both of those services, maybe someday down the road, uh, may be embraced by technology. I know that, uh, Zoom itself is, is working on, uh, texts from our voice recognition and, and, you know, the video and the auto-publishing of it, so.
Yeah, so at this, so at this point, for the videographer, there is no contract, he is not an employee.
Okay, all right. Yes, Ms. Chick?
So can we get this settled by, you said the end of the fiscal year is June, June?
30th.
30th, okay, one way or another, end of story.
I think we have to.
Okay.
Well, okay, that's all I had on that. I don't know if anyone has anything else. Ms. Eleanor?
So you are correct, um, Mr. Dignan, that we did talk, that the Planning Commission, or the Planning Commission, the Personnel Committee, the PC and the PC, um, the Personnel Committee would work on this matter, um, with, um, Stacy Bellisle. So I would recommend that the three of us, which would be Ms. Otto, Ms. Manley, myself, meet with Ms. Bellisle to see a course of action that would be appropriate to get this done, um, to make sure that we have everything that we need and should be following. Because personally, I know, I personally, I know I have not been involved that much with the independent contractor agreements. I know Ms. Otto has been taking the lead on that. So I would like to see, you know, I don't, I don't, haven't even seen the independent contractor in a while, the agreement in a long time, so I'd like to see that and see, understand it and what we need to do to get this resolved, because everybody else has said.
Yeah, it hasn't changed since I distributed it to the committee, so, um.
Maybe redistribute it.
Yeah, could you redistribute it? Yeah, I don't, um, I don't, I can't seem to find it in my folder.
We know how things get into the email abyss, so. All right. Excellent. Uh, next item, I, I put this back on the agenda, because to be quite frank, I just, I have not had time, and I, I, my plate is full, and um, I wanted to bring it back to the board to decide how the board wanted to proceed, if it wanted to establish, uh, a new member for the manager committee, if we wanted to hire an outside agency to do it, if we wanted to uh, just post the position that we had posted before and start through it. Um, basically, I'm bringing it back to you because I just have not had the time. Uh, my, my plate is full. Ms. Chick?
Yep, I would recommend highly that we go ahead with, uh, Ms. Bellisle's recommendation to bring in a firm and reading through the information that she sent, um, I would be comfortable with either the basic or the typical, uh, search or, and I can't find the name of the company. Is it MML?
Yes.
Yeah, through MML, yeah.
Are you making the motion?
Yeah, we're not professionals in this. We, none of us have the time, uh, even with this committee. Um, our plates are full. I think we need to do this because we're making a bigger investment this time to do it right and have professionals take care of it for us.
Okay, Ms. Otto, did you have something?
I was just asking if she was making a motion.
That'll be my motion.
Okay.
And I'll support it then.
Okay, there's a motion by Chick and supported by Otto. We're gonna have discussion on the motion. Mr. Moko? And then Ms. Manley? Uh, Mr. Oh, there you go.
Yeah, at, at the end of the day, I feel like we're hiring basically a glorified office manager here, um. I, I don't see why we don't put out the RFP, see what, see what we can get before we spend 20 grand to hire a headhunting firm to do it. Um, it's, it's really hard for me to get behind spending that kind of money, when we haven't even attempted. I know the previous boards have done it. We haven't even attempted to hire someone on our own yet here, so I, I, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Moko. Uh, Ms. Chick, how much was it at that level? I, I don't have it right in front of me.
It was between 17 and 21, 14 to 17 for the basic, and 17 or 21 or 22 for the typical. And, and it's, the, the job responsibilities to Mr. Moko's comment are much greater and much more, um, uh, important to the township than just an office manager. They oversee many, many things and represent the township in different, um, levels of, um, community organizations, so, um, and they have to have, these are careers, they go to school for this, and they have to planning background, uh, zoning background, uh, it's, it's not just somebody that is just an office manager, uh, they have to have a lot of knowledge about different things and, and, um, uh, handling municipal responsibilities within a community, and they bring experience from other communities to our community that we don't have. We don't have that kind of knowledge here.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. I certainly have a greater appreciation for what the township manager does, having been, um, uh, shouldering some of that, uh, burden. Ms. Manley, and then Mr. Nelson, and then Ms. Eleanor?
Two things. We are MML members, correct?
I'm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Believe we are, yes.
And then should we amend the motion or make a new motion on which one, the typical or the basic?
Yes, sorry.
I think so.
No, that's okay.
Okay.
So, I guess, can I make a friendly amendment to go with the basic search service? Through the MML?
Hey, there's a amendment to choose the basic services or support for that amendment?
I would like to include the amount of 14,000.
Not to exceed.
With 14,000.
Yeah.
Not to exceed 14,000?
So, do, do we want any of the optional services attached to that, but there's no price for the optional? I'm fine with it. Never mind.
I'm sure we can always adjust it if needed.
Is there support for that amendment?
I'll support.
Okay. Motion, okay. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Okay, uh, Mr. Nelson?
Um, I, I just did want to say, personally, I, I, I do stand here. I, we could put out an RFP, we could see what comes our way, we could make it very specific as to what this township wants and the standard that we need. I, I just don't want to spend taxpayer dollars personally, um, even, even if it's not as much as one would think, without actually trying to see if we can do this in-house, rather, um. So, or, with, with the entire motion, I think I myself will probably be voting no, although if we did have to go down that road, route, I just wanted to say I will be voting yes to the amendment, because if anything, I would obviously want to proceed with the basic, uh, plan and, and the cheapest possible. But I personally, I, I do see the township manager as very valuable in representing the township. Um, I think, I don't think anyone here disagrees with that. Um, however, overall, I, I, I just don't see why we would spend that kind of money without at least giving it a go ourselves first. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Ms. Zelenak and then Ms. Otto.
So, I agree, I will not be voting for the amendment, nor will I be voting for the overall motion. I think we should have tried, um, when the committee was formed to actually do this. We probably could have had applications in by now. And if we can't, if we can't filter out people to interview, how are we going to interview them and pick the right person? And then manage that person. To me, this is the first step of the process, and it's probably really the easy step of the process. It all comes down to interviewing, giving the person goals, managing them, and performance reviews. And again, if we can't do this, and we haven't even interviewed the firms to determine this would be the best firm or not, I just don't support it. I think we can spend the $14,000 on road improvements.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Zelenak, Ms. Otto.
So I look at this as an investment. We, I went through, uh, the previous, uh, folder from the last, uh, RFP that we sent out on, uh, Township Manager, and uh, I will be voting for this, basically because of who we got as, um, applicants for it. We got anywhere from, uh, individuals that never have worked in government to individuals that have worked in different segments of government, but not specifically a township manager or a city manager. So, um, I will be voting yes, and I feel that I look at this as an investment, uh, because this is an important position.
Thank you, Ms. Otto. Ms. Chick?
Yep, um, I would say, um, look how well we did it last time, no offense to anybody, but a bad hiring can cost the township much more than 14,000. It could cost you 100,000. So, let's do it right this time.
Okay. Any other discussion on the amendment? Uh, Mr. Moko? Or the most.
At the end of the day, I, I, I'm not saying we shouldn't use a headhunting firm, but there's no reason why we don't try it ourselves. We, I mean, it's not, we don't have to, you put the RFP out, you see what we get. If, if all we shake is, you know, crap out of the bag, then we, then we go a different direction. That's, I, I just have a hard time pulling the trigger. I know, obviously, we know what the other board, the previous board did. I mean, we all knew previous managers, so I, that's my state.
Thank you, Mr. Moko. Okay, is there any other discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll on the amendment? Amendment is to not exceed 14,000 dollars.
Did you have a question, Josh?
Yes, I did have a quick question, so. Just, just simply because of, uh, Just, just simply because of, uh, we, if I say yes to the amendment, that means it doesn't pass. We still have to vote on the overall motion. Just making sure.
Yeah, they're, they're separate mo, they're separate motions. They're separate votes, correct?
Thank you, Ken.
I know, I understand. It's a procedural thing. Rather we get clarity on it. Sure. Okay, Ms. Manley, will you call the roll on the amendment?
Yep. Dignan?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Moko?
No.
Chick?
Yes.
That passes five to you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the motion itself?
Well, what's going to be the salary? I think the firm might want to know that.
I think that'll probably go through, you know, if we hire a firm, we're going to probably have to go, if we hired a firm, we'll probably have to go through that process with them and figure that out.
And who's going to work with the firm?
And we have a committee?
No, we don't need a committee. Can, is, can Stacy work with the firm?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're adding more cost?
Yep. Mr. Nelson?
Again, it's up to 14,000, right? So whatever her costs are.
You would probably add cost, her cost anyways because she says to review the contract.
I, I would like to point out the fact of the matter is, is we're going to be putting down $13,000 here potentially, and honestly, we, we're not even sure how much these firms are going to negotiate for a potential salary. Just, just putting that out there.
No, they don't negotiate. We set the, we set.
We set the salary.
Through their process of onboarding, I'm sure they go through some sort of onboarding process where they interview the board to determine what kind of candidate the board is looking for and what the goals are the board. And the board, I mean, certainly, I can't fathom that this is done in the vacuum. They, they would come before the, us and, and go through that.
Yeah, that's how I read it.
I think with the things that we have on our plate with Parks and Rec, the things that we have on our plate with hiring a planner or, or I'm sorry, a building official, the things that we have on our plate coming with onboarding our ordinance enforcement officer and various other things. I find it incredibly, how can I say this? Difficult to believe that we could come together and, and do this on our own in a fashion, especially been involved in the, the attempt to hire three individuals recently, three skilled individuals with, with educational backgrounds in various areas. And it is an incredibly hard, hard thing to hire somebody these days. It's hard to find good, qualified, high-quality candidates. And you, you, you know, you get a lot of unqualified people, but to really find people who are qualified, you know, you have to pay for, for a recruiter to get them. I mean, that's, that's my, that's my experience. I'm not saying that that's always the case, but those are, that's my two cents. So, all right, Ms. Zelenak?
So again, I think this process has been flawed. We have not even interviewed the companies to determine which one we think would fit. It appears that we went with the lease price. We're not sure to me that would be the best if we were trying to get a quality candidate and a quality process. We have in our budget $112,000 for the manager. I think, you know, who knows, you know, we're going forward without talking to these firms and they're going to make a choice for us and we're going to interview them. That's my understanding of the process and it all comes down to interviewing. And if we can't get us to the selection of the four candidates or five candidates, I don't see how the board as a whole will be able to pick the appropriate candidate. I have doubts and again, this is the first step. The real step is managing them. If we don't have time to pick them, how are we going to have time to manage them?
Thank you, Ms. Zelenak. I, and, and I do want to point out, the firm doesn't choose your candidates. It doesn't choose. The board does and, and the, the, the candidates that it weeds out are based on criteria that we set in working with them. You know, in a public session, in, in a public meeting. You know, I, I just believe that we have to move forward with this process. I, I will definitely step up and say that the reason that the committee has not met is I have not taken the lead to schedule it. I'm not going to mince words about that, but I've come to realize that on that front, my plate is full and this is too important of a role in our township to, to not bring it forth to the board. So with that, if anyone else has any comments, if not, we'll have Ms. Manley call the roll.
Otto?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Moko?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Dignan?
Yes.
That passes four, three.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is announcements. Does anyone have any announcements? I do not. Next is petitions and communications from members of the public. There's anyone from the public that would like to address the board? You may do so at this time. Please limit your comments to three minutes. If you would like to raise your hand at this time. Let it reflect. I don't see anyone with their hand raised. Next item is board member comments. Anyone have any comments or clarifications? Yes, Ms. Chick and then Ms. Manley?
Yeah, I just have a, a quick comment regarding the amendment to the ordinance on the, to comply with the Michigan zoning enabling app on the PUD ordinance. We have been asking McKenna to do an ordinance review since they started with us and we have not done that so far. So this is a good push in the right direction and I think we need to get on it like tomorrow. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chick. Ms. Manley and then Ms. Zelenak?
Um, yes, Mr. Fink, are you going to resend us over the first page of that Milledge request?
I can.
Okay, so I can get that over to the county and then.
Doesn't mean I'll get it right.
All right, we'll double check it. It's one word and then.
Two.
Two.
Um, threw me off now. Who is going to reach out to the MML about the manager? Who wants, how are we going to start that process?
Mr. Dignan.
I can do that in the morning. I can do that.
And then second thing, I guess if I could request to Ms. Chick, if we could have the planning commission available, even, you know, as guests at the meeting on the 25th, in case we do have questions for them?
I would.
They would be willing to do that?
Oh, yep. It'll be on a volunteer basis, but I advise them.
Okay, thank you. And that's it. Have a good evening.
Okay, Ms. Zelenak and then Mr. Moko?
So I just would like to say, you know, I have a, I had a, I have concerns about information that went out on the township electronic newsletter for Chestnut Development. First of all, it was not accurate. The proposal is, includes 208 apartments. It said that it was 208 attached townhouses.
Right.
It, it was approved by one board member. And when we were discussing marijuana businesses, the township did not promote the marijuana businesses information meetings that they held. I think we need a consistent policy. I think that's very important. I think now more than ever, we need a communication plan. I know Ms. Otto and Ms. Dignan agreed to do it back in January and was going to bring us back something back in our first meeting in April. In general, to me, it's not good policy or practice that one board member can decide what gets published on behalf of the entire board. I think it's important that our communications are unified, accurate. That's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Zelenak. And Mr. Moko?
I just wanted to update anybody that's out there listening that fireworks this year are on July 2nd. The parade is on July 3rd. And it's going to be, going to be real good. Get back to normal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moko. Ms. Manley? Still muted.
I find mine are mute. Um, Mr. Dignan, you mentioned something about an office change?
Yeah, I can't, there's nothing to share at this time.
Okay.
Yep. So, okay, Ms. Otto, do you have anything?
Uh, no, I don't at this time. I do want to let everyone know that the DDA did purchase all the materials for the eight anchor benches and that the Kiwanis or I have offered to have those benches. I will probably be sending something out on Facebook to get some additional volunteers because it probably will need about four to five people to get the eight done. All of it is, if everything's pre-cut and everything, we just need to switch out boards. That's all it is.
Thank you, Ms. Otto. I do want to address one thing. It was not one board member that approved the communication that went out. It was more than one board member. The communication that went out, the information that was put in the first paragraph was the only information that was put together by staff. It was put together on, without provocation. Staff put that together and, and chose to publish it. I think it's incredibly helpful actually, and I think that in the future, when we have a development come in, if, if an applicant has a development nearby, we might want to consider requiring that they show us the product that they actually produce so that we can make an objective decision based on the quality of not only the product that they're using on the interior of their things, but the exterior of their homes. You know, sometimes a drawing just doesn't do justice to what an elevation might be. I think the fact that it was shared at a public meeting and as part of an official record, I, I don't have an issue with the fact that staff shared that out. It was not at my direction to share that out, but certainly the, you know, the information that was there said, whether you agree or disagree, this is an opportunity to see with your own eyes, hear with your own ears and make a decision without the hyperbole of the bloviating that's been going on in the community in regards to growth and development. There's a lot of misinformation that's been communicated and outright blatant lies. And those blatant lies that are being spewed are nothing short of atrocious, to be quite honest. And, and, and I would have thought that we had more mature individuals throughout our community that would address things in a more professional manner, but clearly that's not the case. We've been dealing with this issue for 22 years in this community and it's time to call a spade a spade. And I'm not going to mince words about it anymore. So I'm going to be real clear with things. I'm going to be very transparent with things. I want the public to understand and see exactly what's going on. The only way to understand what this development is, is to put your eyes on it and see what it is. I think that, that opportunity for the public to do that and then weigh in is, is great. I hope that we see more of that in the future. So, Ms. Chick, I'm done. Did you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that this, that announcement was made publicly. It was already out in the public and I have no problem with any board member communicating. That's, we talk about communication, but then when we communicate, people are getting told not to do that. So no, I believe that we need to be as open and as transparent as possible. And this was an effort in transparency, not only for the township, but for the developer to, to tell people, hey, come and look and see, you know, what I'm doing, who I am and what I'm proposing here because it looks a whole lot different in person than it does on a piece of paper. It's not the most flattering depiction on a piece of paper, actually. But I, I didn't have a problem with it and I'm, I'm sorry, some people do, but that's my thought. I just think it was good communication and, and offers a lot of transparency. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chick. Yeah, a lot of the public did, did ask that more people be notified of this development so that they could look, you know, more people needed to know about it. Well, more people know about it now in the community than ever have, so they can learn about it. They can make their own decisions and, and, and come forth with their own thoughts. So, Mr. Moko?
Yeah, I'll be out at the, the Chestnut Development around 10:00, 10:30 on Saturday and I'd love to hear from anybody for or against it. You know, in person. And thank you, everybody, for the continuing emails about, about their thoughts on it.
Absolutely, absolutely. I agree. Thank you for the communication that helps us to make decisions. All right. All right, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Is there support?
Support.
Support.
By Digna, supported by Chick. All who is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, folks. We'll see you next week.
Have a good night, everyone.
Too, thank you.
Thank you.